All right, so number 12. I know. It's your turn. Agenda head number 12 is to do an update on the high school feasibility study. So Tina Stanislavsky is here from HMFH to present. Thank you for coming, Tina.
Thank you for having me. So we're having a little technical difficulties. If you try switching to the PDF. I don't know. If you want to leave it on that and try to flip through, it's fine, too. So every time I come here, I bring a similar presentation and kind of add to it as we go along in the process. So this has all the original options that we started with. And so if you'd like me to go through them, we can start from the beginning.
I think it's important for her to go through them because when we did meet, we met not on TV at different times to the subcommittee. But here, this is an opportunity for the community to see what the feasibility study, which is completed, you know, it's full product.
Okay. Will the slide advance work that you had before if it's the PDF? Or do you have to stand there? Okay. So the way we started the feasibility study was we went through and started talking about the things that would be important to building a new Stonem High School. Some of the ideas that we wanted to get incorporated into the new building that the old building really doesn't have for the kids and for the teachers. So this is sort of the list that we based the new designs around. These are sort of the goals that we had heard from this committee and from the building committee. So we talked a lot about having cutting-edge maker spaces and fabrication labs. This is an area that's rich in technology companies. And so there was an interest in getting those companies to come in and talk with the students and sort of teach the students the sort of STEAM education that's going on right now. We also talked a lot about having a performing arts space that would highlight Stonem's excellence in that area. Right now, the current high school sort of has their art rooms scattered all over the place. The kiln is in the basement of the lowest level. So we wanted to try to get the art studios within a wing with technology and science and really get that cross collaboration going on. And then in those areas, we wanted to provide some flexible project area spaces so that multiple classes of kids could come together and learn together. So not just in the classroom, but space outside of the classroom to do those projects. And then all of the projects that they were going to create, we wanted to make sure that we had display areas so that we could really highlight that work once it was done or even when it's in progress. Another thing that we heard that was really important was incorporating the life skills and the 18 to 22 programs in the school, but let them have their own identity. And we heard that there's, you know, a lot of need for special education classrooms and teaching spaces, which are sort of being tucked into every nook and cranny that they can find right now because that population of children is expanding, but the space in the high school isn't expanding with them. So I think when you all started looking at this project a while back, you thought maybe the high school's, you know, big enough that we could expand into it. But I think with the sped programs and these STEAM programs that we're seeing, you really are running out of space. So there really is a deficiency in space. And then last but not least, you know, a physical education facility that really supports health and wellness. The gym right now is sort of tucked away. Like, you really don't know it's there. So maybe if that was exposed more, people would be more interested in the programs and feel good about participating. And then the last but not least, integrating the pre-K program at the high school. So having those two groups of students together would be a really interesting mix so that the high school students were sort of mentors for that younger population. So these are just some different diagrams that show, you know, the sort of standard classrooms around the outside. The bigger classrooms are the science labs. And then that sort of space in between, that could be the project areas. The spaces in pink are sort of the technology labs or the art rooms. And so how that might look if it was a pod of classrooms in a new school. And these are how some of those spaces look in buildings that we've completed. Project areas and open space for collaboration and interaction between students across the whole school. And these are some of the maker spaces and fabrication labs that we've done in other buildings to help sponsor this sort of STEAM and 21st century hands-on learning spaces. So then these are just photos of the, or plans of the existing high school. And all the different colors are different departments. So you can see that the school's not really organized right now. Green is offices. Red is standard classrooms. Orange is specialty classrooms. So there's not really a good organization. Classrooms are sort of grouped here and there, but not all together. And then you have your newest wing that has some of the science classrooms. And those teachers, we heard, felt kind of isolated. They're sort of out there on their own. And sometimes it didn't always feel safe because they're, you know, kind of alone from the rest of the building. The same kind of thing happens on the lowest level where there used to be the shops. And so we heard a lot of, you know, we could use that space, but it's really isolated. So there's a, you know, that people don't want to use that space. So I think we could just flip through the existing fairly quickly. This is the existing site. And then in the renovation options, so we looked at three basic options. We looked at renovation. We looked at an addition with renovation. And we looked at all-new. For renovation, we decided we would bite the bullet and renovate it all in one phase. So what that would mean is buy modular classrooms for the kids to live in while the renovation happens. So basically, if you're going to renovate, it would take, you know, about 18 months for the first phase, and your kids would be in modular classrooms. So what we ended up finding is that you spend a lot of money on buying the modular classrooms and not, you know, that money is sort of, after you use the modular classrooms, it's just gone. So it's not sort of put into the building for educational purposes. It's just sort of to get you through the construction period. So after that, the next phase would be if you renovated all the classrooms in the first phase, then you moved your kids into the renovated portion of the school. And you took over, you renovated the, what is the science wing now? And you made that into the pre-K wing. And then you renovated your offices and built a new auditorium. That would be your next phase. So you'd be looking at about four years of construction in that scenario. So that also, because it was phased and it took four years, really added a lot of cost to that option. But what you do end up with in the end is a building that's fairly organized. The purple is your gym. So one of the things we looked at is the gym is actually bigger than a standard MSBA gym. So it's not 12,000 square feet. That's what they let you build if you're going new. It's actually 18,000 square feet. So renovating that is probably a good use of your money because you get more space. And then outside of the gym, we were proposing that that would become the new STEAM wing. So the blue spaces are art spaces or, you know, your fashion lab. And then we would make all of the science classrooms be across from that. So we'd renovate what our science classrooms on the second floor now and put them on the first floor, too. So you really could create that STEAM corridor right there. And then the rest of your classrooms could get renovated. And so your classrooms are almost the right square footage, so it isn't terrible to do a renovation. I think for high school, MSBA says 825 square feet. Some of your classrooms are about that size. So it is a good use of money. And then we would build a new auditorium and basically renovate the admin and the cafeteria. And so that's, we can just keep going through that. You keep going. So basically, your site looks almost exactly the same as when you started because you're not really adding anything to it. And, you know, you could build your turf fields like you showed in your previous study. So that would be that. Now, the next thing we looked at was what if we save the gymnasium because it's the bigger program piece in your school? And we built almost entirely new school out in front of your building? So the nice thing about this is that you don't have to buy modular classrooms. You're building almost all-new educational space right in front of your building. So when you come down your entrance road, you'll still end up with, there's your main door right there at the entrance. And then you would do, you would renovate your gymnasium and keep that. So if you flip to the next side. When you take down the existing school, this is sort of what it would look like on the site. So if you go to the next side. So that bar in the front of that gray block, that would be the new school. And it would be three stories. And you could pretty much build whatever you wanted. You could create your STEAM wing. So the left of that bar is a new auditorium. So you'd, in this case, build a brand-new auditorium. And the site sort of slopes right there, so you could take advantage of that and build your, you know, higher part at the front of the school and then have your stage down by where there's a loading area right now in front of the gym. So that works out pretty nicely. And you could renovate the gym over a couple summers. So that could be done simultaneously to the new building. And then a second phase would be to tear down the existing school and build the pre-K wing. So the pre-K wing is sort of the bright purple classrooms to the right of the gymnasium. Keep going. And that's, these are just the upper floors of that scenario. So you can keep flipping through.
Where would the cafeteria be?
So if you go back all the way to the beginning. So the caf, and that's, oop, one more back. The caf is that sort of bright greenish-yellow square.
Okay.
So where the arrow is would be the main entrance coming in. And then to the right-hand side would be the admin. And the caf would be sort of in the corner there. So it'd be kind of nice because your caf could open up onto that grassy area where the old building would be. So you can flip through. And then the site would end up looking like this. In this, you actually gain some fields. So that's a plus of this. That was another thing that we heard that was important, outdoor space. And if we could get more outdoor space and outdoor classrooms for the kids after dining, that would be a good thing. Yeah, we can keep going. So this is the new high school. So this basically would build a brand-new high school in what is the parking lot off to the right-hand side of the existing school. And when you tore that down, you would have parking in front and then a whole area of fields. And a new school could be, you know, whatever you want it to be. In this case, we were showing a sort of three-story scenario, so it would fit on that parking area. One of the drawbacks of this is that you come in and the school is sort of off to the side. You don't see it right away. But one of the pluses is that it keeps all the fields together, which is pretty nice, too. So these are just some of the plans for that. And we can flip through these. And that's the final site. We would come in and then all the fields would be together. We also did look at, too, if you wanted to, when you finish these, to build some outbuildings out by your stadium and create, you know, some locker rooms out there. That's a possibility, too. Keep going. So these are just some of the pros and cons that we use to sort of grade the different options to figure out which one would be the best option to go with. And some of the criteria we use, the shortest construction schedule would be the most beneficial for the town, mostly because, you know, kids are in high school for four years. So if you go for the renovation, a child could be there during the entire renovation. So the high school experience is during construction, which is tough. If it had modular classrooms, it wasn't as beneficial as some of the ones that didn't. If it had phased construction, that would mean that it would take longer, therefore it would cost more. We also looked at the criteria of the options that could separate community space from educational space during the off-hours of school. And so pretty much the two, the renovation addition and the new, could do that. The renovation would be a little bit more difficult because the auditorium's on one side of the school and the gym's on the other side. All of the options would provide sufficient security measures. So that's something that the school could use an upgrade on. Basically, all of them had good teacher collaboration and educational teams, which was important. Maintaining the gym and the auditorium would be a plus because they are bigger sizes. And so if you build with MSBA now, they will allow you to build a bigger auditorium or gym. You just have to pay the difference in the square footage. The other thing we looked at is having the district offices in the school or not in the school. In the all-renovation option, there wasn't enough space to have both the pre-K and the district offices. So the district offices would have to move out in that scenario. All of them can include the pre-K if you don't need the district offices. All of them will be energy-efficient. All of them, except for the renovation, can expand in the future. The renovation would be a little trickier just because you're taking up more of the site. All of them either maintain or add green space. And all of them provide outdoor classrooms and dining space. So then we just looked at different site comparisons and which one was more beneficial. The renovation addition had a little bit of a gap between the fields, but still provided more field space versus the new, which had all of the fields more or less together. And so then we get into the cost information. And so that's where we've sort of elaborated. And John and I have been talking about the difference between building with MSBA and building on your own. This is sort of where we left you last time. We had looked at the cost of the three different options. So the renovation was around $93 million. The reno-add was $92 million. And the new was $91. So they're all extremely close to each other. The renovation ended up being more because of the modular costs and the phasing of the construction. So even though it's surprising, you would think a renovation would be less expensive. In most cases, it isn't. So then this slide is just a little bit about soft costs. So construction costs were in the 90s. And then on top of that, you have to add 25% to 30% to pay for design services, not just for the architect, but for the engineers, to do things like the survey, to include furniture and equipment for the new school. So all of those things add up to more money. So basically, now, we're talking about MSBA process. The SOI was submitted in April. So that's good. You're starting up on the left-hand corner over there. And now, the waiting period is on. So you find out in December whether you get accepted or not. So hopefully, that is the case and you get accepted. And then the eligibility period starts. So that can take up to a year. And this all sounds kind of incredible, but it's kind of on the MSBA's schedule. This is the way they work with their board meetings and so forth. So the first phase is basically your due diligence. And you have to select your OPM and your designer. So that can take anywhere from six to 12 months. Then, once you have your designer onboard, you go into feasibility and schematic design. And that can take anywhere from 12 to 18 months. And the reason why it takes so long is because feasibility is split into like three different sections. And so you complete a section, which takes four to five months, and you submit it to the MSBA. And then you wait until they review it for six weeks. And then you have to go to a board meeting, get it approved, and then you move to the next step. So it's kind of a slower process.
Can I interject, too?
Absolutely.
And despite the fact that we've done our own feasibility study, MSBA will not accept that. They will make you go through their feasibility study.
I think it will help you because there, you know, there won't be so many questions for you all. So I think it'll make it easier for you, but they'll still make you go through and check the boxes. And then the next phase is going to the project funding. So then you have to align your vote from the town with MSBA board meeting. And once you get through that, you know how much the MSBA is going to reimburse you. And then the final phase is design and construction documents, and that can take anywhere from 12 to 18 months. So for a grand total of three and a half to four and a half years. We have done it in three years. We're working in Saugus now. And it's been about three years from the beginning, from when we came onboard, so in feasibility, to we're going to be putting the shovels in the dirt in June, basically. So it's been about three years for that.
So it's about three years before we started construction?
Yeah, it's about three years from when the architect gets onboard to when you can start.
It could be four years before you start construction.
Yeah, oh, right. Sorry, yeah, four years.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it depends to when, after they tell you that your SOI gets accepted, they then prioritize the districts and sort of release you a little bit out of time. So if they accept 12 in a year, roughly, they say, here's the first three that are going to get to go. And here's the next three. And so it's a kind of rolling basis. And I think that's basically because of the funding. So they have enough money to get certain communities started, and then, you know, others have to wait. So that's the MSBA process.
You said 40% reimbursement rate? Is that, you're assuming that?
So I think John assigned me that you had 50...
I believe we had 53%.
For the middle school?
Yeah.
What we're doing right now is we're just using...
A conservative figure.
Conservative figure because what happens is, so MSBA, they say, you know, we'll reimburse you 53%, but that's eligible reimbursement.
Good point.
So they only...
Breaker.
Yeah. So they, buildings right now are, they're about $450 a square foot. And MSBA will give you about $333 a square foot. So there's a percentage of loss right there. And then, you know, if you build a bigger gym, then they don't pay you for the square footage that you're over. And they'll go through your space summary and tell you, well, we'll pay for that program, but we won't pay for this program.
They will not pay for your fields.
They'll pay for a certain amount, like 7% of your site costs, but that's it. It gets capped. So there's lots of things that are in there that they won't reimburse on. So I was using 45% to be conservative, just to give you a feel of how much it would be. So basically, if you look at the top, I was trying to figure out, you know, if you got accepted this year, what the process would look like for MSBA and how much the project would cost with escalation. So escalation is about 4% to 5% right now. So every year that you wait before you start construction, your project increases by roughly $5 million. And it varies per option because each option is slightly more money. And each option takes a little more time. Right? So your renovation option will end up escalating more because it takes longer to construct. So the way we do it is we escalate to the midpoint of construction. So that adds two years for the renovation versus one year for the new project because that only takes two years to build. So, you know, these are big round numbers, just to give you kind of ballpark. So if you decided you're going to build a new building with MSBA and you got selected this year, you're looking at a dollar figure of about $144 million, 145, if we can round here. So if you go to the next phase, the next slide, this is just talking about escalation, like I was just saying. So each one escalates about 5.4, 5.3, 5.3 each year. But then, if you think about the reimbursement that you get on each of these, this is what you end up for roughly a town share. So the renovation, you'd be paying $84 million. Renovation addition, you'd be paying $82 million. And then new would be $79 million. So even though it takes a long time to get through the MSBA process, it's a lot of money that you get from them. So it's definitely worth it for most communities to wait to try to get into the pipeline.
So that's been a long, a lot of debate as to, do we start?
I know.
Do we start now? Or do we, you know, end funding for the town? Or do we wait?
Yeah.
We have some slides to go with that.
I just have a couple more, and then we can, we can get into the...
Sorry, I'm going to jump ahead. I read ahead.
Yeah. So if you decided that you weren't going to build with MSBA and you're just going to hire an architect, you can probably get through the design phases much quicker because you don't have to wait for all of the process for MSBA. So it's probably like two years if you wanted to go feasibility to construction documents and get your shovel in the ground. If you hire a CM instead of a general contractor, you could have really bid packages. So you might even be able to start construction in 18 months. Because they could, you could finish your structural drawings, you'd get those out onto the street, and you could start digging. So this is just talking about building without MSBA and what your cost might look like escalating out into the future here. And then if you skip to the last slide, I was just comparing. So if you go down to the bottom, the new, if you build new with MSBA, you're paying around $80 million. And if you don't go with MSBA, you're paying around $134 million.
And that's if, four years from now? Or is that two years from now, that 134? Or three years?
So they change depending on the option. So the new would be two years of design and two years of construction.
No, but I mean, right, so four. So if they went without MSBA?
Mm-hmm. So that would be, we escalate to the midpoint of construction. So that's two years of design and one year of construction in there. But that's starting right now.
Starting right now.
If you go to the end of the year and you hear no from the MSBA and you start January 1st, you're going to hire an architect and get going, that's the price.
Okay.
So it's one, so the new, I mean, I feel like I need a table or something. What's the best one?
Well, the, obviously, the new is the cheaper model on that currently, whether that's the best.
Oh, I see. It has both there. I'm sorry, the highlighting threw me off. It was the color.
Right. So the difference is, if I may, Madam Chair, what we wanted to get, take a look at here, and we had talked quite a bit, was, we, obviously, we'd like to do this project with MSBA. But right now, because we didn't get selected over the last two or three years...
Yeah.
We're already now $20 million in the hole because as we keep waiting, it's $5 or $6 million a year to get to that construction part.
Right.
Now, granted, they'll, they'll pick up some, you know, they'll increase their stuff, too, as well, when it comes to construction cost and all of that through the years. But it's never to the point where you want. It's very, it's very, as you said earlier, circuit breaker issue. However, what we wanted to give an opportunity, though, for you and the community to see, though, is at some point, hopefully this year, we're going to get, we're going to get selected and we move forward on it. But if we don't, we need to begin that thought of, do we want to go on ourselves? And I know that you've already started that by having, doing the feasibility.
That's why we did this, right.
Right. And so we wanted to make sure that those prices, we can take a look at what those costs are going to look like. Because the longer it takes, the more it's going to be. And we're just, you know, it's more years.
Yeah.
In the building, that we're putting money into a building that we know we don't want to put money into that building any longer.
Right. Well, not exactly. But yes, yes, we don't want to put money into a building unless we were going to rehab it.
Correct. Correct.
So just my understanding, so if I were to take two numbers away from it, the numbers I think I would want are the town cost based upon the MSBA sharing the burden versus the non-MSBA. And it looks like, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So it looks like for, for, you know, say, you know, either one, any of them, it looks like the difference is somewhere in the neighborhood of, ballpark, call it, $50, $55 million difference. So that's, that's a big difference. That's a big difference. Yeah. And, and the timeframe is, you're looking at about a three-year difference in project time?
Yeah.
So it's, you save three years, but you're getting, paying about $55 million more.
With $5 million increase per year, it still doesn't, you know, it doesn't really...
It takes a while before you get to that cutoff point where the escalation is overtaking the MSBA.
Yeah.
It'd be great if you could know when the next recession will be. Then our construction prices will dip.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's, we're at where we're at.
I think the other point of this is to start thinking about the appetite of the town. Like, what, what is the price that the town will support? You know, when is it too much for them for the school project? And whether you go with MSBA or non-MSBA, that's a good question to have.
I agree.
How do you, how do you probe that?
With the tri-board, probably, but also with the town administrator and the town accountant to get a sense of like the actual financial capacity of the town, probably.
So one of the ways we do it when we go through the MSBA with the feasibility study is that we go out and really talk to various groups, people everywhere. We go everywhere with this. And then we will have actual nights where people will come in and we will show them what we're talking about here. And we did the dots, and people put on what they think would work. And that's how we start to get the appetite of what, what would happen. Because we could, we could turn around tomorrow and say, you know, what, what does a $120 million school looks like, look like for us as opposed to 134? I mean, right now, this, what we're looking at with these projected costs is probably what I would assume the Cadillac version of what we've put in to all of these areas and said, this is what we would like to see from everybody that we've talked to. Whether or not we went in all of those directions, that's, you know, when you get into this process, that's when you start to, the reality comes in when you know what the actual amount of money you have. And then you start to, to look at it from that perspective.
So it's likely, the point is, it's likely to be less than this, not more.
Could be.
But depends on what the economy does fundamentally.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I agree. The, yeah, when we did the middle school, we had, we met with every PTO several times. We had information in the papers. We had meet and greets. We did, went to the senior center. center.
Town day.
Town day. So we, you're right, we did socialize it everywhere. So it was, and it was, it was, it was worth it, so. But, yeah, no, I think that that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and some part of it is education, right? Because most people are going to assume a renovation's going to be less expensive.
It's surprising that it's actually more.
And it's more, and you have to tell people why it's more, and then, as you present it to people, it makes more and more sense. And so then people are, you know, willing to pay more or pay less, or, you know, you have to bring everybody along for the ride, so everybody understands the process, I think.
And the other part of the renovation is that all of the modulators and all of those are not reimbursable.
Right.
And that's why those monies come up, so you get less reimbursable on those particular parts, as opposed to what other areas you would do, so.
Just thinking of the third graders tonight, are the modulators, do they, are they one-time use, and they get land? Like, what happens to them? Do you rent them for a period, or like?
You can do it any number of ways. Usually, if it's long-term like this, if it's going to be more than a year, people tend to buy them and then sell them after.
So they get reused?
They can get reused, yeah. Or you could rent them. I mean, you'd have to do the math, you know?
I forget, last, at one point when we talked, you told us what the lifespan of a modular classroom was. Was it about 10 years or something?
That's what they say they are.
Yeah.
Some, some communities have made them last a lot longer.
Yeah, I remember, when I was a kid, I was, one of my schools has a modular classroom, you know, I think it was made in 1950, so, but...
This is, this is one of the top three issues that, when I talk to residents, this is a top three issue for them, and it's never, "Don't do it."
Yeah.
Do it faster.
Is that happening? When is that happening?
Correct.
Why isn't that not, isn't that happening yet?
Right, right.
So if that's like a very anecdotal measure of interest, I get that all, I get that a lot.
That's great.
My experience. I don't know if that's consistent with you guys.
Absolutely.
You hear that a lot.
Yeah.
Couldn't hear it more often.
And I thought, Monday night, it was real clear.
Yes.
Real clear.
Yeah, it was true. That drove, really drove a lot of the discussion.
Yeah, it was, it was brought up more than once, the, the high school and the ability to bond for it, and the town's financial capacity to pursue a new high school was definitely front and center throughout town meeting on Monday night.
It's going to come down to the price, yeah.
Yes, it will.
So the value engineer, yeah.
Yeah, it'll come down to that. That's, that's the thing. It's, it's not, no question about the demand.
Yeah. So there's a number of things you can do while you wait for MSBA. If you go on their website, massbuilding.org, you can, massschoolbuildings.org, you can see their list of things that you have to get done during eligibility. And so if you can do any of those now, before you get tagged, then that might make that phase shorter. Some of it is the bonding capacity and figuring out the finances and getting that all sort of straight.
That's interesting.
Forming a building committee, and they have the criteria on there for that. And there's other things. So the more you can get done ahead of time, and you've already got the feasibility study done, so that puts you, I think, in a good spot. You know, you're very organized with that, so, all that can help.
Okay.
And a really important point, a really important takeaway for me in this, I think, is that the speed at which we do this really affects the cost dramatically, right?